We're going to call this regular city meeting to order at 7:00 PM on August 4th. We've got George Hoyer tonight, he's going to lead us in prayer, so I ask everyone to please stand, we'll do the national after meal afterwards.
Let us power heads. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with a steadfast purpose that they may faithfully serve in their office, to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor's attorney.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick, absent this evening, as well as Commissioner Lovett. Commissioner Malley.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City manager Lovett.
Here.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to excuse both Commissioner Hendrick and Lovett.
Support. Motion to support, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. They have been excused. Moving on to communications, we've got item 4A, which is just the pending agenda items. Somebody want to read those off? I don't have them in front of me. Why don't you go ahead and read them off?
Oh, you've got a machine there.
Yeah, I haven't gotten there yet.
Somebody read them?
Yeah, go ahead.
Number one, emergency plan mutual aid agreement. Safe routes to schools, beach parking, tall ship dockage, East China School District land lease, ADA compliance for city buildings, 108 North Water Street seawall, 300 Broadway, Saw Grant, town hall meeting, fix-it tickets for Blight, and Tifa presentation for webpage blog.
Welcome. Thank you.
Make a motion to accept and file the communications.
Support. Motion to support, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. So be it. Moving on to item five, which is public comment. You're welcome to come to the podium to address the commission about city business. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to under five minutes.
Gary Coes, 430 Water Street. A year ago, if you told me I'd be dressed in a tee-shirt Comic-Con thing, I would have laughed at you. But we're sponsoring, one of the sponsors of Comic-Con, and I do believe it's going to be one of the biggest events in the Blue Water area. I mean, I think it's going to be great this year, but I think next year it's going to become one of the big, a major event, with the proceeds going to support the River Rock Teen Zone and a permanent teen center, which we are very close to finalizing a plan. We're on the agenda tonight for approval of our application for pumpkins, popcorn, and politics. We are going to set two Guinness World Records, and then we're going to get the highest voter turnout of any community in Michigan this fall. The kids that were here did their presentation, it looks like we've got it set up for that. They're going to be able to make that presentation to every school in the region, in the area. They've been invited as far away as St. Clair and now Port Huron. So the whole idea is, it's really catching on, and it's going to be the kids driving the bus to get the highest voter turnout. And after the primary with 18% showing up, this town needs some help in getting out to vote, without any doubt. So I think it's going to be a good program, and we've got it all dialed in, and it's working. I'd like to invite anyone who's in town between 6:00 and 10:00 o'clock tomorrow morning to stop by the Mariner. Paul Miller from WHPM, the number-one drive-time radio station, is going to be doing a remote from our lobby. We're going to offer free donuts and coffee to anybody who wants to stop by and meet Paul. We've got a list, a whole line of interviews set up for him, so it should be a real good thing for Marine City. And finally, you probably have all read about Marcella's Boutique up in St. Clair being thrown out of their place. I made a point to stop there and invited her to move to Marine City, and we'd help her move. So I thought that was appropriate. So with that, I'll stick around, and if you have any questions on the promotion of pumpkins. Oh, I will say that Vandabush Farms is supplying the goods, I mean, the pumpkins and the peanuts, and I've been overseeing that because you can't trust Vandabush, you just can't. And so, and I am officially a farmer, right, Dave?
Yes.
I'm officially a farmer. And I'll, I shouldn't let this out of the bag, but you know, if you go in there and buy a dozen ears of corn, you get 13, because they can't be responsible for the corn. Well, be careful. We found an ear of field corn in the dozen we got, so I just want to let you know. With that, if you've got any questions afterward, I'll hang around. And so stop by the theater tomorrow morning, and free coffee and donuts. 6 to 10. Good. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Nobody else? Sure? All right, moving on. Item six, which is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussion? All in favor of approval of agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's been approved. Item seven, A, which is the city commission regular meeting minutes from July 21st.
I move to approve the city commission regular meeting minutes from July 21st, 2016, as presented.
Support. You guys kind of missing Diane right now.
Yeah.
It's all different now, isn't it? They have motion to support, do we have any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's been approved. Moving on to item seven, B, which is city commission closed session minutes from July 21st.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the city commission closed session meeting on July 21st, 2016.
Support. Motion to support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Didn't think there'd be any discussion. Moving on to item eight, A, which is special event pumpkins. This is actually the consent agenda, so I'm going to go through the whole list. Item eight, A, which is a special event permit for pumpkins, popcorn, and politics. Item eight, B, which is pension board minutes from April 26. Item eight, C, which is retiree healthcare minutes from April 26. Item eight, D, which is planning commission minutes from June 13. And item eight, E, which is Tifa minutes from June 21st.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Motion to support, any discussions?
I just had one question for Mr. Coes about when can we start reserving pumpkins and that, and said they'd be available. Do we have a date yet for that?
The website is, the domain is there, and it should be populated and operational come Monday morning.
Okay. Thank you.
What else? Commissioner Avery?
I would like to thank Mr. Coes and crew for putting on this event, something else to add to Marine City, and that, of course, is in combination with the vote drive. That part is going to be very, well, we need it, so thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda's been approved. Moving on to unfinished business, we have item nine, A, which is adoption of ordinance number 2016-03, pedestrians' Rights of Way. Somebody like to make a motion?
Sure, I would move to adopt ordinance number 2016-03 in regards to pedestrians' right of way.
Support. We have motion to support. This has been in front of us a couple times, so is there any discussion on this? Everybody's okay with it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to item nine, B, which is approval of collecting bargaining agreement for Teamsters Union 214.
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city and Teamsters Union Local 214.
Is there any support for that motion?
Yes, support.
I believe Commissioner Malley supported it first. The motion to support, any discussion on this item? This was one of our closed session agenda items. Is this a roll call vote for this?
Yes. Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor's attorney?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Thank you, board. Moving on to item nine, C, which is approval of collecting, collective bargaining agreement for the Police Officers Association of Michigan.
I make a motion to accept a bargaining agreement negotiated with the Police Officers Association of Michigan.
Support. The motion to support, is there any discussion on this item? Another roll call, please.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor's attorney?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Thank you, board. Moving on to item 10, A, which is chief of police recommendation. Do you want to take that one?
On Friday, July 22nd, I, along with a panel of three other chiefs from Port Huron, Marysville, and Clay Township, conducted interviews for five applicants for police chief position for Marine City. We went through the same set of questions for each candidate and reviewed each person based upon the merits and their skills, resumes, answers to the questions. We actually came to a unanimous decision to recommend Jim Hesslop for the position of chief of police. This was obviously a pretty long drawn-out process, and Jim has been the acting police chief for, I think, the last about eight months now. So I have before you recommendation for Jim Hesslop as police chief.
I move to accept the recommendation from the city manager and appoint Jim Hesslop chief of police.
Second.
Motion to support, any discussion on this?
Just that we're pleased to have Jim brought on board as full-time now, fulfilling the job he's been doing. So, being as a lieutenant, does that change to somebody else's position?
Yes.
No, I'm going to leave that lieutenant position vacant. And what I've done is, when we were in the budget process, that position I've made into a part-time detective to help me out with case reviews, but that lieutenant position will stay vacant.
I guess you would transfer it to somebody else?
I will not.
Okay.
No. I don't believe, at this point with a full-time chief, that we need a full-time lieutenant in that position. Before, when Chief Hillary was here and I was a lieutenant, that position was crucial since he was only part-time, he was coming and going. And as a lieutenant, I did a lot in the department. So now, moving in there as full-time, I can continue doing what I was doing in the past, just in a different capacity. Allows me then to use that position to make a part-time detective.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I'd just like to say I was extremely pleased with the recommendation, and I think you're the perfect candidate for chief, especially since you've been here, experienced, you live in our city, extremely professional, extremely dedicated, and I was really, really pleased with the recommendation.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I am humbled. Eight years ago, when Chief Hillary left, I had no intention of putting in for this. And you know, even his recommend, or even his resignation letter had said something about recommending Jim Jones. And the more the time passed, the more I was comfortable and confident. I developed relationships within the county through other chiefs, through other lieutenants, and realized that, you know, I can do this job, and I'm committed. As I said in my interview, I have 13 years left to retirement, I'm not going anywhere. You know, I'm here for the people, you know, and one of my concerns when I presented a 90-day plan was to have a town hall meeting. I want to hear people's concerns, I want to address these concerns, and if there's issues out there, I want to get them fixed and taken care of. So I am committed to the community.
Well, you're going to be, you're going to do great. You're going to be one of our best hires, just like Mike Yetrich is one of our best hires.
Thank you.
So I've got all confidence in you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, let's have a roll call vote for this one, too.
Commissioner Simpson?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Turner?
Absolutely.
Mayor's attorney?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes, absolutely.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes.
Congratulations. Now, moving on to some really important business. We've got item 10, B, which is a hot water heater installation at the police department, we're going to waive the permit fees. They're asking for us to waive the permit fees.
I'd like to motion to waive the permit fees in association with the hot water installation at the police department.
Support. Motion to support, any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Fees been waived. Moving on to item 10, C, which is downtown sidewalk table slash chairs and signage discussion. I know you've been approached by people on this, so I'm going to let you take the lead on this.
I would love to just pull this from the agenda so we can have one of the shortest meetings followed by, you know, after the longest one.
One of the longest ones?
Yeah, yeah. This is something that merits some discussion. I think I just want to throw out a couple ideas tonight so that you can consider it, and I can possibly do a little bit more research, or we can determine how we want to move forward with this. The issue at hand is, is the inner zoning ordinance, section 90.016, specifically spells out that there should not be anything on any of the city sidewalks. Prior to my coming here, and the proliferation of it since I've been here, has been a significant change in the community. A lot of these things I speak about are things like the sandwich sign boards, benches, tables, chairs, planters, statues, merchandise. These are all things that, based upon how our ordinance reads right now, are not allowed to be on sidewalks. What we need to consider is whether this is something that we are going to allow, or we are going to follow the ordinance as it is. And if so, we need to do it consistently throughout the community, and in essence, get rid of everything on all of the sidewalks. I know a lot of people have expressed pleasure with having a lot of these little planters and chairs and table setups throughout the cities that kind of adds to the charm of downtown Marine City. There are a lot of local communities that do have ordinances that spell out the specifics of what's allowed with certain parameters. For instance, they limit either the size or what you can have out there. One of the most important things is that you do maintain a safe path for travel. There are other communities that are probably kind of similar to Marine City, maybe we could look at some of their ordinances, just kind of brainstorming. We talked about a couple, like Plymouth, Chelsea, Rochester, Romeo, Elmont. This is something that either you could direct me to either work with county planner, a planner, our attorney, or just do some research on my own, take a look and see what options are out there. Or this is something that you could refer to planning commission, or you could refer it to a subcommittee. That's pretty much where we're at right now, so I just kind of wanted some feedback from commission about what your thoughts and ideas are.
Yeah, one of the main issues is, it's got to be ADA compliant. In other words, if you block the sidewalk by any means of a wheelchair going through, you're in violation, and that would be a no-no. Because that's what I think what that whole ordinance is about, about making sure, because our sidewalks are not exactly really wide, you just have to take consideration, that's all.
And that's something that...
I don't mind having chairs and whatnot, planners, or having different things, but believe me, if somebody in a wheelchair feel like they're a nuisance, you know, they don't want to feel because of them or something, but if you're just being courteous, and if the store owner makes allowance and is compliant, to understand, that's all.
Yeah, I think a lot of the business owners, some leeway to be able to advertise and make their businesses maybe stick out amongst, you know, sort of a whole, single facade of downtown is probably a good thing, but I think what tends to happen on these things is you see the eventual creep. They might start out with a sign, and then a bigger sign, and then some flags, and then some chairs. I think that's probably what we really want to look for, is just, you know, standardizing that, whatever that looks like. And, you know, as Commissioner Malley said, of course, make sure it's ADA safe, make sure the construction or mounting of the signs is safe, should we get any sort of wind or anything like that, that that's not going to injure anybody. So I would imagine that these things are probably pretty easy to access. A number of years back, the planning commission reviewed our sign ordinances in general, and this is one of the things that they, that the city commission at the time said kind of not to touch. So, but there's a lot of information that we found out there, so I would think that my recommendation might be to have the city manager work with her resources, whether it be planners or other cities, or just personal research to see what else is out there. I know the number of things we found with signage, it was pretty standard in a number of communities, and there wasn't a whole lot of variances of people who updated it from the 50s and 60s.
Well, I was, we also have an ordinance that says you can't hang anything off a tree. It's a separate ordinance, and there's a lot of that going out there, too, so. I'd like to find a way to control it, but I think we definitely should continue to permit it, because it does add to the charm of the city, and, you know, certain, I know we have Mr. May in the audience today. Would you like to speak on this subject, since I know you're one of those people that are involved in this?
I think you're here because, you know, because of this. Yeah. We've had a lot of reactions to the tables and chairs out front, because it does add the charm to the store itself. With the new sidewalks that were poured last Monday out front, also, Mike moved the tree area in a different position, so it was not into the parking area where a car door would hit the new trees that are going in. So what we did is, we adjusted our tables and chairs outside to be ADA compliant also, because we realized that where our tables and chairs were, the tree is right there then, the new trees, that's going to go in, so we adjusted the tables down, so there is still that three and a half feet, almost four feet of walkway that the wheelchairs can get through. I would like to suggest also possibly maybe having some bike racks put in somewhere, because there is a lot of people with bikes. We are the bike crossing area for, you know, international, where they cut across from coast to coast, but there's not a single bike rack downtown for any of these people that are coming through. So if we have one or two bike racks somewhere strategically placed, these kids and people can actually have, put their bikes somewhere. You know, I was today walking into the store, and these kids were all out front, and they had their bikes everywhere, and I just politely asked them to put them up alongside the building, and they did it no problem whatsoever. But, you know, it's like, there's a lot of maneuvering going down. I agree, there's certain things that shouldn't go out on sidewalks, that maybe if we adopt that, we bring the things in at night, because I make sure that everything's brought in every single night, not only to keep the sidewalks clear, but for theft also. You know, it's like, what a great opportunity for somebody to take some of these tables and chairs in an umbrella when nobody's there. And if we do keep the sidewalks clear just for those people, but you know, it's like, we have two chairs, two tables, you know, two chairs at each table itself, so it's not out into the walkways itself, it's up against the building, so.
Well, and as we talked weeks ago, you mentioned some of the benefits, actually, that you're providing by having the tables there. You know, because you clean up the mess, and the garbage isn't going in the public
Correct.
Containers, and, you know, so it's not just an advantage to you, there's advantages to the community, too, to the city.
I'm one of those weird store owners that I go out every day and clean the sidewalks up. I sweep the curbs. Today, I swept from East St. Clair all the way to Washington Street, all the curbs were clean this morning, so.
Methodology for your business in particular to make it more accessible, it's hard, we see a lot of these comments on, how do you make an old building without any egress accessible to someone in a wheelchair who can't do steps? And that goes, that takes into some measure to be able to accommodate someone that can't do steps.
Correct. It's exactly what we did when we opened the store up, we made sure that we had two entrances, we had the step entrance and we had the wheelchair entrance. So we were, we were thinking ahead of the curve on that one.
Well, you know, as a business owner, how do you think, what would you think would be the best way for us to control this? Just improve our ordinances, maybe come up with special permits, you know?
Yeah, improve the ordinance, and, you know, it took, it took me almost two years just to have the ordinance changed, just to put the signs, you know, the shingle signs out, because we kept going against the, you know, in front of the commission on that. And everybody's complying to that. I mean, yeah, we don't want our city to turn into a whole bunch of pickle buckets down the sidewalk with flags in them saying, you know, candy, clothes, that's one thing, that's just making it look tacky. But for tables and chairs for accommodations, like the fish company has people sitting outside, roasted, myself, it's more of the retailers and the restaurants that have those extra tables and chairs outside that are accommodating their guests that way, so.
How about if we put together a survey and put, and center it around the business owners to get some input, before we do any kind of changes?
Sure.
I think it'd be a good idea.
You know, we had discussions with, you know, the gentleman that owns My Sister's Closet, he had his plants out a little bit, and we talked, and I says, you know, if your plants were up against the building, you wouldn't be blocking the sidewalk. It's an easy discussion, we moved them, they look fine, you know, he doesn't bring the plants in at night, but it still looks, it adds, it does, it adds charm to the city. You know, when you're walking down the street, you actually see something, instead of like the flower boxes that we put in and everything else, it just, it dresses it up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, does anyone want to, you want to just do a little, you know, do a little research, have our city manager look into different ordinances, and maybe come back with some recommendations?
I think that's good to chat with the businesses, not just on Water Street, though, because I know there's several, if you kind of go around Parker and Broadway as well, so we should, you know, make sure we're soliciting both sides of town there. And I'm not sure if this same thing would apply to anyone that's in the plaza by Kmart, it's probably a different ordinance, because it's not quite a street, but I know some of them have been known in the past to do that, too, so if we're looking at the entire issue, we might want to look at how it applies and the different types of locations we have as well.
Commissioner Avery?
I, a word came up that I think is important in our consideration, and that is tacky. We certainly want to make sure that our commercial signage and so on out there is respectful of our historic nature in town. We should be careful, and the fact that we have strictly one area, Nautical Mile, that can do certain things, and the other businesses theoretically have a much more restricted nature of what they can put out. This is a good time to amend that, because as had been, as has been mentioned already, the rules aren't being followed, they're not being enforced, so therefore, we have disrespect for the ordinances. So I think it is a good idea if we evaluate that, and certainly, talking to the business owners with a survey is a good idea. I mean, somebody has to do it, but...
I guess we need to tell them what's some criteria for our survey, first of all, so... Well, I think a good place to start is what's out there right now. Let's not reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
Like you said, can't get ahold of some communities, see how they're handling it. That'd give you a good starting point.
I think it'd be important to know how those communities' situation is, similar to ours or different to ours. You know, if it's a city that has a lot more sidewalk width-wise, you know, of course, we're going to have to take that into account as well.
Right.
But to make sure that we're comparing as many...
Well, I know in a lot of the communities I work in, if you're going to have outdoor seating and you're a food venue, they usually insist that it's, you know, actually has some type of railing or fence around it.
If you're serving alcohol, that's a requirement for...
Yeah, and a lot of, a lot of communities, you know, like, say, Royal Oak, their sidewalks are, you know, very wide, and they can accommodate that, so, you know, like, something like that probably wouldn't apply to us, it just isn't the room, so. I guess everybody wants to do a little research, and we'll bring it back at a later date.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you for volunteering.
I don't want us dying committee.
Right. No. It's better off hailed by... Right, no, it's better off hailed by one person at this point. We're going to move on to item 11A, which is financial business, disbursements including payroll.
I move to approve disbursements including payroll in the amount of $356,479.82.
Support. Motion support. Is there any questions on this? City, not yet, roll call, please.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Skatardic?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Mallye?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
City managers report.
Not much to report. We had bid openings for the demolition of the Turhune property for the brownfield. They came in lower than anticipated, which is good news. I think it was American International, if I'm correct, that was the lowest bid.
International Construction, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, so we're working with Envirologic on moving forward with that. Demolition could start as soon as this month.
There you go. That's it, huh?
That's it.
Wow. Commissioner Simpson, you want to start us off?
Sure. As was mentioned earlier, we only had a, you know, less than 19% voter turnout, and with the encouraging of a community group to get absentee ballots and that out, I thought that was, it was interesting to have such a low number. Unfortunately, it's about standard for us, you know. We oftentimes, we hear from people about, worried about their taxes and that, but, you know, people chose not to show up, and this had four ballot proposals in regards to taxation, whether it's an increased one or a renewal. So I felt that was interesting, that people were opting not to voice their opinion either way on those issues, not to mention, you know, a whole list of other items there, so that was disappointing to myself, and it's up, yes.
Passed in the city.
Yeah, yeah, so I, for as much as we've heard about taxation, we have less than 19, you know, not even 1,000 people show up to vote, and I thought that was unfortunate, regardless of what was on the ballot, I think it's unfortunate. So I appreciate Mr. Coase's efforts, and I really hope that we can, you know, make some ground as a city and get people out. No matter what that number is, I hope we make improvements on our normal 30% mark that we usually see around presidential election time. I want to wish best of luck to the Maritime Days folks and committee, they're working hard right now, they're starting their setup day. And, you know, remind people, from my experience on music festival and doing other things, there, a lot of people are not afraid to tell people how to do things, but when it comes time to step up and actually volunteer for things, whether it be festivals, or civic groups, or even, you know, Boards to the City, we find time and again that people don't show up. I know any time, any year for a music festival, we had a volunteer meeting, very few people showed up. Maritime Days folks shared with me that one person showed up for their volunteer meeting, and I saw that posted everywhere, so I thought they did a good job of getting the word out. So, yeah, I just want to remember that, remind people who might be watching or listening that, you know, at home, these are our neighbors, these are people that are volunteering and giving up hundreds, and in most cases, for the people on the board, thousands of hours of their personal time throughout the whole year to organize these things, and it's not an easy thing to put together, and just want to wish them luck, and thank them for their hard work and dedication to keeping these things going. It's not an easy thing.
Commissioner Avery?
I will echo the same sentiment for the election. It is sad, we can complain about things, but we don't do the simplest thing of learning a little bit about an issue and voting. And we're looking forward to the Maritime Days activity, that will be good for the city. September, in the middle of the month, we have the Heritage Festival as well, so it's time for volunteers to come forward and help on that one. There is time. There's always a little sweeping and things that needs to be done, displays brought. This is something that is focused on the historic nature of the city. So, anybody that can contribute any knowledge, any craft, any, any form of help for this would be good, to showcase what our city and the people who lived in it were like. Thank you.
Congratulations, Jim, on your appointment. Super excited about it. I think our city manager couldn't have made a better selection, not knowing who the other candidates were. I still feel you were the right choice, so congratulations. And not to sound negative, I'm fully in support of Maritime Days and all the effort that they put into it, but they have to be mindful of the businesses in town, too. The fact that they kind of shut down the town for the weekend is great, you know, it's the intent, but they have to be mindful of the business people that are here. You know, you can't dictate to them what they can and can't do, so, I'm just throwing that out there. Thank you. Commissioner Mallye?
Yeah, I want to say one thing about, when it comes to primary, there's where the incumbent always has an advantage, because people that are fighting for an office, they know, the more people that come out, they have to educate the people. But the sad part is, there was other issues that was on the menu that was very vital, but I'm excited that the police passed forth, did pass, and Marine City and the different things did pass. So, that was a good thing for our community. The other thing I did want to say is, I'm excited for Maritime Days. It's our one-city event that is known, that I'm glad it's keep on going, it's going strong, and I commend the people that are running it, they're doing an excellent job, and it's going to be a lot of fun and games. I know you're not going to see this until Monday, but anyhow, it's just an exciting thing, an event, and I'm glad it's still going on for Marine City.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Maritime Days would be great. Actually sponsoring, one of the sponsors for the demolition derby, radio-controlled cars, so I was happy to do that. I'll also be one of the judges for the rib roast, which I'm really looking forward to. They told me I just got to bring an appetite. And there is one serious thing I'd like to talk about, because it's been a bone of contention for friend and foe alike. A lot of people are asking me why I did not participate in the Voice newspaper survey about the candidates for mayor. And I've actually contacted the Voice, I've asked for an explanation and an apology from them. I was never contacted, that is why I didn't participate. They put out an ad, or it's supposed to be an information piece, that looked more like a paid advertisement for a single candidate, which I think is completely wrong, and may have actually had an influence on the vote, since it was the last thing that many people saw just a week before the, week before the election. So, for those that were concerned, I do care about the election, I would have participated in the survey had I have been given a chance, and I am committed to this community, so have no fear. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.